Good evening, everyone. I'll call to order this Bloomington Common Council Special Session Meeting and Committee of the Hall for Wednesday, the 11th of December, 2019. Will the Deputy Clerk please call the roll?
Here.
Councilmember Chopra.
Here.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Granger.
Present.
Councilmember Rollo.
Here.
Councilmember Volin.
Here.
Councilmember Sims.
Here.
Councilmember Sterbaum.
Councilmember Sandberg.
Here.
Thank you. Here is our agenda summation this evening, and if you would like an agenda, you may find them beside the Deputy Clerk. We will go to approval of minutes after the agenda summation, and then we have a report from the Council Committee. Then we have legislation for second reading and resolutions. We have two items this evening. Appropriation Ordinance 1908, which is to specially appropriate from the rental inspection program and the parking meter fund expenditures not otherwise appropriated appropriating various transfers of funds within the General Fund, Parks and Recreation General Fund, Parking Facilities Fund, Motor Vehicle Highway Fund, Alternative Transportation Fund, Cumulative Capital Development Fund, and appropriating additional funds from the Parking Meter Fund and Rental Inspection Fund. And that received the Committee of the Hall action on the 4th of December, due pass 7-0. Second item for second reading is appropriation ordinance 1909, which is to specially appropriate from the food and beverage tax fund expenditures related to the convention center expansion and authorized persons designated by the mayor to relay council requests for recommendations. At a regular session action of the 4th of December, we postponed consideration until the special session this evening, and that was passed 9-0. Then we'll visit council schedule before we adjourn, and then we will immediately reconvene for a committee of the hall chaired by Councilmember Chopra, and that will consist of ordinance 1928, which is to amend Title II of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Administration and Personnel regarding amending Chapter 2.28 Bloomington Living Wage Ordinance to remove exclusion for city seasonal employees. And the sponsors for that is our Councilmember Granger and Piedmont Smith. So with that, we will now go to approval of minutes. We don't have any minutes, do we, to approve? Seeing none, we'll now go to council committee reports. And I have a council committee report of the Executive Committee, and it involves a complaint that was issued by our clerk, Clerk Bolden, this past August. And it was, the subject of the complaint was against our employee council administrator and attorney, Dan Sherman. After we received that complaint, the council officers, Councilmember Volin, Councilmember Granger, and I met to determine how to handle that complaint. And we met with a witness to the meeting where this complaint evolved, Councilmember Piedmont Smith. We met with Corporation Counsel, Philippa Guthrie, met with the HR Director. And we determined that we should form a committee, Executive Committee, to meet as long as was needed to resolve this complaint. And an advisement from the HR Director and Corporation Counsel, we resolved that we would hire an outside counsel to investigate. And so that's how we proceeded. The investigator is a specialist in employment law. His name is Mark Wolford, and he's here this evening seated beside Philippa Guthrie from Bose McKinney Law Firm. The investigation proceeded. Mr. Wolford issued the summary of the investigation to me, and I distributed it to council members and to Clerk Bolden and to Daniel Sherman. We found that the complaint was not corroborated by the investigation, and because it involved Mr. Sherman, we determined that Mr. Sherman was the aggrieved party. And we offered time for comment by Clerk Bolden and by Mr. Sherman. The report was issued to them on October 14th, and Mr. Sherman and his counsel determined that he wanted a public statement read into the record that would exonerate him regarding the complaint. I sought opinions of the council, my council colleagues, and we determined that we would hear this matter tonight and that we would vote on that. So I would like to read that statement, and then we will go to the council questions, if you have any, for Mr. Wolford this evening. I'm reserving time for Clerk Bolden to make a statement and Mr. Sherman, if they care to, and then we can decide whether or not we want to take action on that. So the statement reads, "The City of Bloomington Common Council has investigated City Clerk Nicole's Bolden's complaint against City Council Administrator Attorney Dan Sherman, which stemmed from a Rules Committee meeting that took place on August 5th, 2019. Mr. Sherman expressed concern that the Rules Committee meeting had not been properly noticed according to Indiana's open door laws. Ms. Bolden's office was responsible for posting the notice for the meeting. Ms. Bolden claimed that the notice had been properly posted and that Mr. Sherman's behavior toward her in questioning the notice was disrespectful and rude. Ms. Bolden also stated that Mr. Sherman's behavior may have stemmed from a personal animus toward her related to her race or for some other reason. After receiving Ms. Bolden's complaint, the Common Council hired outside counsel to investigate two issues: the truthfulness of Ms. Bolden's claim that notice was timely and posted, and two, whether Mr. Sherman had any animus based on race. The Common Council's outside counsel interviewed numerous witnesses, including Ms. Bolden and Mr. Sherman, reviewed emails, reviewed video, and reviewed photographs. After gathering all this information, outside counsel for the Common Council prepared a written investigation summary dated September 11th, 2019. Based on the information collected through the investigation, it was determined that the evidence does not support Ms. Bolden's claim that the notice was timely posted on Thursday, August 1st, 2019. The evidence also showed that Mr. Sherman was justified in his concern about the adequacy of the notice and acted to prevent the Rules Committee meeting from taking place in violation of Indiana open door law. Lastly, the evidence did not support a finding that Mr. Sherman was motivated by race or any other prohibited discriminatory motive in questioning Bolden about the notice. For purposes of transparency, the Common Council is making available to the public the section of the investigation summary titled conclusions, takeaways, and suggested next steps by placing this part of the investigation summary into the record. Finally, the clerk is advised not to engage in any retaliation against Mr. Sherman. By a motion, the council approves the statement and the action it requires, and we will move to that soon." So this is essentially, the statement is a recapitulation of the findings of the report that was given to Clerk Bolden and Mr. Sherman on October 14th. So with that, I'd like to open it up for council, if you have any. Well, first, let's go to council questions. Are there any questions for?
I just have a quick statement. I just want to take this moment to...
Yes, could you, let's go in order, because right now, I just want the city council to ask Mr. Wolford if he has, if they have any questions regarding the findings, and then we'll go to comment, okay?
I just want to take this moment to apologize to the clerk for any actions that have led to this event.
Mr. Sigler. Please. Could I have order? And please wait until your call is on. So, Mr. Wolford, do you mind coming up to the podium, just in case there are any questions? Are there any questions from council for Mr. Wolford? Councilmember Granger has a question.
I think this is more for the record. Have you done these sorts of research probes before?
Yes, I have.
State your name, state your name, and for the record, thank you.
Sure. My name is Mark Wolford. I'm an attorney at Bose McKinney &amp; Evans. I have done these type of investigations in the past.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions? Okay, seeing none, thank you, Mr. Wolford.
Thank you.
So I would like to now turn it over to the clerk or Mr. Sigler. Clerk Bolden, thank you.
On August 6th, 2019, I filed a complaint against Mr. Sherman with Human Resources and the council leadership. On August 11th, 2019, I received a written report detailing the results of an investigation of the events leading up to the day of the complaint. Seeing that the report did not address my actual complaint, I withdrew it on October This public action, after my private complaint was withdrawn, is unnecessary and retaliatory. Good evening.
Thank you. Is Mr. Sigler still here, or has he left? Apparently, he's left. Okay, we're back to council for any further questions. Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Just to respond to Clerk Bolden's statement, Mr. Rollo, or Mr. Wolford, is, the report was actually concluded well before October 24th, when Ms. Bolden says she withdrew it. Is that, is that true?
The report was concluded, yes. It was issued to Clerk Bolden by me on October 14th, and it was concluded in September, I believe. I don't remember the date. Mr. Wolford can clarify.
Again, this is Mark Wolford. The date on the cover page of the investigation summary is September 11th, 2019.
And then, Mr. Wolford, your report was issued to the council president on October 14th? Is that right? Or?
No, September 11th.
Oh, September, okay.
Yes, yes.
You had mentioned October 14th.
October 14th is when I distributed it to Mr. Sherman and to Clerk Bolden.
Okay.
I distributed it initially to the Executive Committee before I distributed it to the affected parties.
So it was a full 10 days after the report was distributed that Clerk Bolden attempted to withdraw her complaint?
That's correct. That's correct.
Mr. Wolford, may I ask another?
Please.
Mr. Wolford, has this, have you ever encountered this situation where an employee made a complaint, and then there was an investigation, and then after the conclusion of the investigation, the employee withdrew their complaint?
I'm typically not involved after the conclusion of an investigation, so I cannot say one way or the other ultimately if someone else has withdrawn a complaint. I'm unaware of that happening, but I can't say definitively.
And is there anything in employment law that would speak to this occurrence?
I think the council has the authority to decide what to do with the facts it has before it.
Thank you.
Further, are there further questions? Councilmember Chopra.
As a white male, I'm curious how you ensure that your cultural competency or your understanding of race relations is such that you can investigate these types of things competently?
The best I can do is to listen, so any investigation begins with listening. So you start with the person who has voiced their complaint. Oftentimes, it's in a written form. This one started out in writing, so I had something to work from, to ask questions about. But ultimately, the goal is to let the person who is complaining make their statements and identify any pieces of evidence or witnesses that may be corroborate the way they're feeling or what they have experienced. And so the answer to that is you just try to listen as best as possible and ask questions to allow the complainant to say everything that they want to say.
Okay, so you don't engage in a group effort with, you know, people of different life experiences in that effort?
I think ideally, I'm involved living life on life with people of all backgrounds. I don't know if that answers your question.
It does answer my question, yes. Thank you.
Other further questions from council? Councilmember Ruff.
I'm confused about the request to withdraw the complaint. Would there have been a point where Mr. Sherman would have been the one deciding about that based on his status as aggrieved in some way?
Actually, I was going to ask that question of Mr. Wolford, because it would, it would reveal our determination of how we proceeded, and that was that there are two parties involved. And once the investigation was underway, and actually, the report was concluded, council action involved determining what the proper consequences or procedure should be for both the complainant and the person who was, who the complaint was directed. And at that point, it was determined that Mr. Sherman was the aggrieved party, and therefore was, we had to determine what would be a proper, proper action regarding him. Is that correct?
As I understand it, Mr. Sherman is an employee of the council, and Ms. Bolden is a co-elected official, not under the authority of the council. So my understanding was that I was investigating the complaint against the council's employee, and then the council was making a determination about what to do with their employee and what the result should be based on, the fact that he is the one who is ultimately the employee of the council.
Councilmember Ruff, does that satisfy your question?
Yes, thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, I think, shall we entertain a motion? Yes, if people, if people have comments, you're free to comment.
Yeah, so we're a comment. Did, does the public, do we move to the general public, or?
I don't, I don't think it's necessary, but I'll, but I'll, let's go to council comment, if anyone would like to say any, anything in conclusion.
Mr. Chair, should we put a motion on the table?
That's what I...
After comment.
Say again.
After comment.
Yes, if there are any...
I move approval of the report.
Of the statement.
Of the statement.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I would suggest that...
When...
Is there a second? Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
There's been a motion made, that a roll call vote be done rather than, rather than a voice vote.
Second.
Then we'll proceed with the roll call vote. Councilmember Chopra, did you have?
I have a question.
Yes.
I want to understand why we're voting to approve a report.
We're voting to, to accept, to, to adopt a, the statement that I just read, that you have, with the attached findings for the public record at the request of Mr. Sherman.
So it's a vote to accept the report of the Executive Committee?
Yes, this is, this is the report of the Executive Committee, correct?
And I just want to make sure, and perhaps I just don't remember, when there are other subcommittees, do we usually vote to accept their report?
Yes.
Yes.
If my fellow council members could help me out and remind me of a time in which we've done that, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Our parliamentarian, Councilmember Volin, do you?
When legislation is referred to a committee, the committee makes a report once the legislation itself has been reintroduced, but come back to the council. For reports that come from a committee where legislation wasn't assigned, you know, it's generally the practice of the council to accept the report.
By vote?
By a vote.
Okay, thank you. But, I mean, could you give me an example, again?
It's been a while. I'm trying to think of, I mean, we don't have very many committees, but I would say the, no, the sidewalk and the Jack Hopkins committees are typically reports that we accept.
That's sufficient. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any, any further questions about clarification of what we're doing? Okay, a request has been made for a roll call vote.
Comments? Comment first.
Oh, well, I opened it up for comment, and there was a motion made. Would you like to comment? Yes.
Usually, we make a motion before we even talk about the thing, so...
I asked, I asked first for comments, but go ahead.
It's a little bit confusing, so I apologize if this is out of order.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
I just wanted to address something that Clerk Bolden said before she departed this evening, and that, she said that, that her initial complaint was a private complaint, and that this report is a public statement, and she felt that was unfair. I do want to point out that Clerk Bolden declared that she would file a complaint against Mr. Sherman at a public meeting on August 5th, where there was a member of the press there. So it, it was, in a way, a public complaint. I mean, the actual complaint that she wrote up, you know, wasn't published somewhere, as far as I know, but the fact of it was public. So I just wanted to make that distinction.
Any further comment? Councilmember Granger.
As somebody who was involved in this process, this was not an easy process for us. It was not, I mean, I think in, there was no precedent for what we've done and how we handled it. We tried to do, we tried to be thoughtful of all parties. I'm sorry that Clerk Bolden believes this is retaliatory, but it, in my mind, it never was. It never was about retaliation, and in fact, when she wanted to withdraw the complaint, but at this point, we'd gone too far, but she wanted to withdraw the complaint, and, and she was, we wanted to know if there were untruths or misrepresentations or inaccuracies that we could, that could be, you know, dealt with in the findings, in the research that Mr. Wolford had completed. And it just, it was, it was not easy. We tried to respect both parties. Mr. Sherman is our employee. Ms. Bolden works with us and is kind of an entity all in and of herself as a, as an elected clerk. But I did want to share that it, we, we were thoughtful, we were deliberate in, in thinking about this, and I don't think any of us really wanted to do this, but in some ways, I think we, I felt like we had to. And we knew this would happen, and we're, it's not the best thing that could happen, but it's, it is what it is. Thank you.
Councilmember Volin.
As the, the member of the Executive Committee, I've had to think a lot about my opinion of this entire affair, and the only conclusion I can come to is that it was unnecessarily and unfortunately so public that this should have been resolved behind the scenes. I can understand why leadership felt that it needed to be resolved publicly, but I just, the irony of this report is that it happened at the first meeting of a committee that was designed to think about issues just like this, how to deal with personnel matters, how to deal with internal structure, and it itself became the kind of thing that the committee was meant to address. And, you know, I am unhappy that anyone felt publicly embarrassed, changed, repudiated. I continue to feel that way. And it's just, I find the entire affair excruciating. There are very few events that have happened in my time on council that have rivaled this for problematic, this problematic. I continue to believe that, I mean, I had moved to create a Rules Committee at the end of our first, right before our summer recess this year. I like to think, however tragically, that I've been vindicated in the need for a Rules Committee, which has not been called in recent weeks because we've been so busy with other items, not the least of which is the UDO and the Convention Center. But I, I have other opinions about this. I think the entire affair is a series of misunderstandings, and I am looking forward to finding a way to put it behind us. But I earnestly wish that this affair could have been handled in a less public way than it was. Thank you.
Further comment? Councilmember Sandberg.
Whenever there is a grievance brought forward, as we have discussed in this body before, when it comes to elected officials or staff being accused of things, there is a due process. And that due process, in my mind, has been exercised here. It's unfortunate whenever there are conflicts that need to be negotiated, but I do feel that as difficult as all this is with two people that we are all very close with, that we know well and we work with well, this can be difficult. But that said, an investigation was launched, findings were found, and just like any process, any institution, we need to respect that, and we need to respect the wishes of the people involved to, if the facts warrant, that they can have their name cleared. And therefore, as difficult as this is, I am in support of the Executive Committee's decision here, and it is my wish from this point forward that all the parties involved can continue to work professionally and respectfully with one another, as, as would anyone in positions of leadership and decision-making can do. Thank you.
Further comment? Councilmember Chopra.
Yes, I'd first like to thank my colleagues who were on the Executive Committee who dealt with this obviously very difficult issue. I think that you all did a very fine job up until this decision to make public remarks about a very otherwise private complaint. I understand that it was requested by one of our staff members, by Mr. Sherman, that we do so, and that would maybe make him whole. I understand that.
I understand that, but I, to me, the punishment doesn't fit the crime at all. This is, this is way, way too far. I just, it seems drastic and unfair to open this all up when it could have and should have remained private. Surely there's a remedy here short of what we did this evening. Thank you.
Further comment? I have a, Councilmember Ruff.
Well, I think most of us know that this wasn't private. Word had gotten out into the community, certainly all through city government, but out into the community. And at that point, I believe Mr. Sherman was in a horrible position. His reputation, after serving the city for almost 30 years, to, and soon to be coming to retirement, to end on accusations that could have very serious ramifications for anything he might want to do from here out, in a community like Bloomington, where this was out and people would not know, people would not know what the outcome, what the findings were, if Mr. Sherman was to want to be involved in not-for-profit work in a community or into any kind of organizations. And this possible stain with a secret, unreleased final report and outcome would have been completely inadequate to me. So I agree strongly with what Councilmember Sandberg said. As difficult as this is, and as terribly unfortunate, possibly the most unfortunate thing I've seen in 20 years on the council, in two decades on the council, as difficult as that is, there needed to be a public record to absolve Mr. Sherman completely. If it had been truly maintained private, maybe not, but, you know, people would bring it up to me in the community. It was, this was known, this was out there. And a record that was not released to where anyone could look at it, what's being, you know, that just begs the question, what's being hidden? Why is this secret? You know, we want to know. So as difficult as this whole thing is, I believe strongly that the council is taking the right action, doing the right thing here.
Councilmember Sims.
Thank you. I just really want to say how truly unfortunate this incident is. Clerk Bolden is a dear friend of mine, and we do much work out in the community, social justice work, community building work. So I know how good a person she is. With Mr. Sherman, he has probably been, in my estimation, the absolute best support and help that I've had since I've been on this council in August 2017. So hearing the complaints initially, it was rather hard for me to digest and believe, actually. And I think that's one reason why it's so important to have an independent investigation. Please understand, we're not talking employee, employee. We're talking employee, elected official. The rules change, okay? And I hope we all understand that. The rules change a bit when we're talking about an elected official. It was the elected official who lodged the complaint, and I just think that we've done our due diligence. I may not care for the results, but I do respect the process. I was a 33-year employee at Indiana University in middle management. I have participated in these type of investigations, having to do with assault, protected class discrimination, harassment, several others in my career. It is never, ever pretty, but I think it is a necessary process. I think I have to support what we're doing tonight with regard to the public record reading. That is definitely not my personal preference, but again, when we're in the elected position, we're a public body. Lastly, I will say this, and this is just something I think I need to say right now. I am on the Rules Committee, the Council Rules Committee, again, for the reasons I stated before, mainly because one of the parties is an elected official. I really don't think anything that the Rules Committee would come up with would have had anything really substantial to do with resolving this, due to the elected official component. So now I don't want to get into a process or anything, or talk about the committees and standing committees at this point. I just, and it's fair to reply, but I'm not so sure that that would have had any effect, one way or another, on this particular situation. Again, it is unfortunate, but I have to support this action. Last thing I do want to say, there's been an issue, the term racial animus has been brought up. That was one of the complaints, racial animus. And obviously, when I got a call, and I think it's okay for me to say this, but when I got a call, the saying that I was going to have to talk to Mr. Wolford, or was requested to talk to Mr. Wolford, I'm like, why? Why? And it's because, two things, I think. One is because my name was brought up from one of the parties. The secondly of all, in order to corroborate some sort of racial animus, then the only other, as far as I could see, person that could have corroborated that, if in fact that wasn't the case, was me. Now, all I can do is corroborate my portion and how I've been treated and how I've related to other folks. If in fact, I did not see that or was not aware of that, it does not occur, or it does not mean that from Clerk Bolden's position, she did not feel that, or it did not occur. The investigation did not substantiate that, and with my relationship, again, with our attorney and with our clerk, I again, support this process. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comment? Okay, I will say that I agree with Councilmember Ruff. I was made aware that this complaint was publicly known, that word was out, people in the community were aware of it, so it became a public matter. It's fair, Mr. Sherman has an exemplary record of 30 years with the city, unblemished. It's very serious implications charging racial bias. I understand and support Mr. Sherman's request for public exoneration. I also want to say that Mr. Sherman was defending the interests of the council when he was, when he reported that the meeting was not properly noticed, and that's, the fact that it wasn't has been substantiated by evidence. Imagine the consequences of meeting and deciding public policy without proper notice. It's very serious, and we're in violation of state statute, so that, we can't allow that to happen. So it, this has been a very difficult, difficult process, and I'd rather be anywhere than here at this moment doing this, but I feel it's necessary for this action to proceed, and I want to thank Corporation Counsel for her assistance, Philippa Guthrie and Mr. Wolford, and my council colleagues who were on the Executive Committee. So with that, Councilmember Volin, do you want to have another comment?
Yes, I would like to point out a couple of things. To call this due process is to assume that we had a process. There was no process in place for what happened. This event was unprecedented, and we, as a council, were unprepared for it. While this problem was not in mind when I called for a Rules Committee to be formed in June, again, I think it illustrates why we need to think more about our internal process. We were forced to create a process on the fly, which we did, and I leave it to every individual to determine how do they think it was. It was arbitrary and made up on the fly. I, you know, I think that the process was thorough, and I think the, you know, everyone worked in earnest to resolve the situation. But let's not pretend that we were prepared for this, or that we couldn't have addressed it better. So, you know, I'm not commenting on the virtues of the people involved. I have respect for them all, but as far as this body goes, we have a lot to address, a lot to make up for. I hope we can do that in the new year. Thank you.
Further comment?
Call the question.
It has been called and seconded, and we'll have a roll call vote. Will the deputy clerk please call the roll on adopting the statement, Mr. Sherman's statement, with the attached findings of the executive summary?
Councilmember Ruff?
Yes.
Chopra?
No.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Granger?
Yes.
Rollo?
Yes.
Volin?
Abstain.
Sims?
Yes.
Sterbaum? Sandberg?
Yes.
Thank you. That is adopted 6-1-1. All right, moving on now to legislation for second reading, I believe.
Mr. President, I move that appropriation ordinance 1908 be introduced and read by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that ordinance 1908 be read by title and synopsis only. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Will the deputy clerk please read?
Appropriation ordinance 1908, to specially appropriate from the rental inspection program and the parking meter fund expenditures not otherwise appropriated, appropriating various transfers of funds within the general fund, Parks and Recreational Fund, Parking Facilities Fund, Motor Vehicle Highway Fund, Alternative Transportation Fund, Cumulative Capital Development Fund, and appropriating additional funds from the Parking Meter Fund and the Rental Inspection Fund. The synopsis is, this amendment, my apologies, this ordinance appropriates various transfers of funds within the general fund, Parking Facilities Fund, Parks and Recreation General Fund, Motor Vehicle Highway Fund, Alternative Transportation Fund, Cumulative Capital Development Fund, and appropriates additional funds from the Parking Meter Fund and Rental Inspection Program Fund. The recommendation was due pass 700.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I move that appropriation ordinance 1908 be adopted.
Second.
Very good.
Is it this point where I introduce the amendment?
Well, would you like us to, how would you like us to proceed? Shall we go to the amendment first?
Deputy Controller. Just that this is a public hearing for this ordinance, and I'm here to answer questions or do an overview.
Okay. All right. Let's offer the amendment, so would you like to make the motion?
Mr. Chair, I move Amendment 1 to appropriation ordinance 19-08.
Second.
Okay, that's been moved and seconded. Would you like to describe the amendment? It's being, we're offering on on behalf of the city controller.
Amendment is to decrease Category 3 in planning and transportation by $33,000 and increase the salaries of the police department by that $33,000, still a net zero impact to the general fund.
Okay. Are there questions? Yes, let's go to questions. Councilmember Granger.
Yes, because those numbers don't add up to $33,000. So the numbers that are in the amendment are that, I guess I could add them up. Anyway, they're not the same numbers, I'm just looking for clarification.
Okay. So the planning and transportation, Category 3, would go to $75,000 to reduction, and be a total reduction of planning and transportation for $208,000. And in Bloomington Police Department, their Classification 1 would go up to $200,000 for a total of $274,887 for the whole department. Is that not?
Thank you.
Okay.
Are there further questions? Councilmember Granger, did you want to follow up at all?
I'm just confused.
Oh, right. Maybe we can clarify. Councilmember Piedmont Smith, first.
So I have a question about the same thing that Councilmember Granger was asking about. So Part A of the amendment is that an additional $33,000 will be taken from planning and transportation, and then Part B is that that amount will be moved to police. But when I look at the columns here in Part A, so we're taking $175,000 from Personnel Services.
Hold on.
And we're taking $75,000 from, Mr. McMillan is getting a copy of what I'm referring to here. So we have $175,000 taken from Category 1, and $75,000 taken from Category 3, and then at the bottom, it says that's a total of $208,000 negative.
Right.
How do you get that?
Okay. The $42,000, we had reduced another $33,000 to get to minus $75,000, which is going to net to $208. It's $250,000, but they had a movement to supplies for $42,000 of that.
Oh, I see, I see. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
I had to take both columns.
Further questions? Councilmember Granger, did you want to follow up? That satisfy you? All right. Very good. Then we will go to the public on the amendment to the ordinance. Seeing no public, back to council for final comment on the amendment. Councilmember Granger.
This is going into the police department, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
I'm glad that things seem to work out at the end of the fiscal year, that we can move things around. I know that the controllers' staff has a lot of balancing to do all throughout the year, and especially at this time of the year, so I appreciate your hard work on this.
Thank you.
Further comment on the amendment to the appropriation ordinance? Someone like to make a recommendation?
Call the question.
Second.
Okay, question's been called and seconded on the amendment. Will the deputy clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Chopra?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Granger?
Yes.
Rollo?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Sterbaum? Sandberg?
Yes.
Ruff?
Ruff.
Okay, thank you. So that amendment is adopted 8 to 0. Back to the appropriation ordinance 1908 as amended. Are there further questions? Does the public have comment on appropriation ordinance 1908? Seeing none, we're back to the council for comment.
Second.
Okay, the question's been called and seconded on the appropriation ordinance. Will the deputy clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Granger?
Yes.
Rollo?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Sterbaum? Sandberg?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Chopra?
Yes.
Thank you. Appropriation ordinance 1908 as amended is adopted 8-0. Thank you, Mr. McMillan.
Mr. President, I move that appropriation ordinance 1909 be introduced and read by title.
title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved that appropriation ordinance 1909 be read by title and synopsis only. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Will the deputy clerk please read?
Appropriation ordinance 1909, to specially appropriate from the food and beverage tax fund expenditures related to the convention center expansion and authorize persons designated by the mayor to relay council requests for recommendations. This ordinance appropriates funds from the food and beverage tax fund for expenditures related to the convention center expansion project, including expenditures for phase two of the project, which involves design work for the expansion of the center and a parking garage, appraisals and environmental work related to the project, including a bond issue and such other related services as may be identified. This ordinance also authorizes the deputy mayor or other designee of the mayor to relay a request of the council to the Food and Beverage Advisory Commission for written recommendation to expend funds. The recommendation was to adopt 9-0-0.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I move that appropriation ordinance 1909 be adopted.
Second. A point of order?
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
The recommendation from our previous meeting was to table, not to adopt, I believe.
Yes, you're correct. Mr. Sherman's out of the room.
I move that, I adjust my motion to take from the table appropriation ordinance 1909, which has been introduced and read by title and synopsis only. I need a second.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Guthrie, thank you.
Hello, Philippa Guthrie, Corporation Council. This is a request that you approve, this appropriation. It is primarily architecture fees to pay the architects for phase two. This is for, as you know, I'm sure, the convention center project, which is a joint project with the county. The Food and Beverage Tax Advisory Commission, as you also know, has to make a recommendation. You had to request it, and it then went to them yesterday. You requested it last week in your resolution. It went to the Food and Beverage Commission, and they approved it yesterday. And I believe Mr. Sherman has provided you with the approval. That's correct. We got it this afternoon. So the appropriation is for a total of $6,250,000, and that comprises, is comprised of $5.9 million for the architecture fees for phase two, which is the actual design work. We are also, that is, by the way, an estimate. It's a not-to-exceed amount. It may not all be used, we don't know. But the architects say, have told us that the normal fee for a project of this type is between 5% and 10% of the construction cost, and the estimated construction cost is $59 million for the actual convention center plus a garage. The convention center expansion itself is $44 million, and then the garage is $15 million. The additional $350,000 was actually expended already during phase one for architecture fees and a few other related services. We believed that we had approval at the time because you made a request, it went to the Food and Beverage Commission, and came back and you appropriated it, and we spent it. And that was under the MOU with the county at the time. So this is a retroactive request that we made to the Food and Beverage Commission. So, and it needs to be included in this appropriation, again, to correct an error in the process that the county asked us to correct.
Thank you for your presentation. Are there questions for Ms. Guthrie? Okay, seeing none. Councilmember Chopra, do you have a question?
I struggled with this a little bit at our last meeting concerning this topic. And I guess I don't understand why we're being asked to do this before agreements have been made, and we know exactly how this project is going to move forward. It seems premature.
We were doing that request, first of all, at the request of the county, that we commit to a garage, because there was some concern that we might not be able to commit to a garage as part of the project. And it really should be all together in the project, so that they work together. And also, it was to give this opportunity to approve the appropriation to this council, since you have been involved in this from the beginning. And we will have four new members next year, and we were worried that it would slow things down, because there's been a delay in keeping it moving for various reasons. So we wanted the appropriation and the funds to be ready to go, because I think we're getting close to agreement with the county on a vehicle, an entity who will manage this project going forward. So, and that can be done fairly quickly. So as soon as that entity is ready, these funds will be available, and the architects can start on the design.
But in fairness, I think you're also concerned that next year you wouldn't get all the yes votes. Is that right?
We don't know what we would get.
I'm saying that that is one of the reasons why you would want to do it now, instead of after January 1st.
Well, I wouldn't say it was the primary one.
I know, but it is a reason.
Yeah, it would be a reason.
Thank you.
Other council questions? Okay, we have amendments.
Mr. President, I want to move amendment one to appropriation ordinance 1909.
Second.
Please.
Okay, I'm going to go through this in detail, because there's quite a bit of detail, and it's important that everyone hear all the detail. The first section of this ordinance simply changes the date, December 3rd to December 10th, which is when the Food and Beverage Tax Advisory Commission actually, yesterday, when it actually properly passed the, what accepted the resolution, oh, I still can't keep track of it all, that the council had to first formally ask for the specific request before they could act, and then they acted yesterday to make a recommendation to this body regarding the appropriation request. And so it just updates it. The second item deletes the last whereas clause and replaces it with, whereas pursuant to Indiana Code, the majority of the members of the commission approve the request for expenditures, and a copy of certain decision is attached to this legislation. I will point out that those of you who have the pre-printed packet will note that my signature is missing from the document. It is not intentional that I neglected to sign it yesterday, and in fact, I signed it a few moments ago, and Mr. Sherman has it. So, yes, the vote was five-two. The third item here, as Ms. Guthrie pointed out, replaces the amount requested with $6,250,000. This is $100,000 less than the, I mean, the city originally ordered, or asked for $6 million. To be more precise, they asked for 5.9, and that added the 350 to it. Total amount being asked for in arrears is $6,250,000. Finally, there is, this section added to the ordinance, which is not part, not a whereas clause, but a now-therefore clause, section three. The city is pursuing this appropriation ordinance now, in order to encumber funds before the end of the year. However, the city will not execute contracts, other than the necessary contract to encumber funds, nor spend dollars from the food and beverage tax proceeds appropriated under this ordinance for expenditures related to the convention center expansion project, otherwise known as project. Unless and until expenditures, sorry, unless and until the city and county, one, have established a governing entity, whether a capital improvement board or other entity, to own and manage the project, and have negotiated and executed an interlocal agreement that sets forth the rights, obligations, and commitments of the parties regarding the establishment and operation of a governing entity, or two, that the parties mutually agree in writing on such expenditures. Once a governing entity has been established, and an interlocal is signed, and an interlocal agreement is signed, expenditures thereafter will be the responsibility of the governing entity, and any existing contracts related to the project shall be promptly assigned to such entities, subject to its acceptance and approval. Any agreement required to encumber the funds appropriated hereunder shall be subject to this condition, and shall contain an explicit provision referencing this ordinance and condition. It is the city's understanding that this agreement shall not apply to expenditures related to the garage associated with the project, that will be built and owned by the city, or to already budgeted and appropriated expenses funded by the innkeeper's tax for the operation of the existing convention center. I pause, because I did not, the one word I did not include, intend to include here is the word "will." I think it would rather be "may," that we may build a garage, because I personally am not committed to a garage, despite my support for designing a garage. If it gets built, that it's important that it be designed in an integrated way with the rest of the convention center expansion. It makes no sense to build it standalone, and to not think about how it can be combined with the others. And that is my main reason for supporting the design money that is hereby requested for designing a garage. So I don't know if I need to strike the word "will" and change it to "may," since it's my own adjustment to this amendment. But otherwise, that is the amendment. This has been the result of a significant amount of negotiation between the city administration, the city council, the county commissioners, and the county council. I want to thank everyone for their patience and cooperation, as we got this right. I'm hopeful that it meets the expectations of our friends in the county. I also want to thank Mr. Sherman for working this text up into amendment form. It's much appreciated. Mr. Sherman, may I simply strike one word and change it with another?
It's in the last paragraph.
It's in the last paragraph, the project that may be built and owned by the city.
Do you want to make that change, in writing, ready for your consideration?
I mean, let's see.
Have you found it, Mr. Sherman?
Not the, not the most elegant language, once it's rephrased the way that I'm changing it, but I trust that everyone understands what I mean. With that, I'm happy to entertain questions on this amendment.
Before we go to questions, I'd like to have the administration, their view of the amendment.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I think there's another slight correction to be made with the amendment.
Okay.
May I do that now?
Yes.
To get that out of the way?
Yes.
Section three of this amendment refers to section two of the ordinance, where it should really refer to section one of the ordinance. That's where the $6 million is indicated.
Do you want to make that change, as you see?
So if that could go along with councilmember Volin's own change?
I'm happy, I'm happy to make that change as well.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Thanks for catching that, Councilmember Piedmont Smith. Ms. Guthrie?
We are fine with that amendment.
Thank you. So we're on questions now from council for the sponsor? Seeing no questions, then we'll go to the public. And we have many elected officials, welcome. Welcome, Commissioner. There may be a sign-in sheet there.
I'll get it on my way out. I'll get it on my way out.
Yes, okay.
Perfect, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, there is. Good evening, Council Julie Thomas, Monroe County Commissioner, speaking on behalf of the board, extending our thanks for your help. We especially appreciate Councilor Volin's assistance, and also Councilor Rollo, Councilor Granger, for your help today. We're really optimistic and heartened by the discussion that we had today at the courthouse, and we look forward to continuing our great collaborative effort to get this project moving forward. Mr. Volin, anyway, we do thank you. We would encourage all of the counselors to support this, because this amendment is very important for us to cement that trusting relationship that we've established. So we would encourage you all to support this as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas.
Good evening. Nice to be with you all again. Eric Spoonmore, Monroe County Council, and I'll echo the same sentiments of Commissioner Thomas. This is what I like to call the move-forward amendment, and would certainly encourage you, that would certainly encourage you all to be in favor of it. I certainly am very supportive of this. And I just also want to thank you all again for all of the work and diligence that you put into this over the last several months and weeks here. Very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President Spoonmore.
Jeff McKim, Monroe County Council, I also urge you to support this amendment. It certainly addresses all of the concerns that I've heard on the county's part, gives us the appropriate guardrails to make this appropriation go through, and encumbrance go through. And I also want to echo my colleagues' thanks to you all. I thought that there was a meeting today between city and county representatives, and I felt like that the sun burst through the clouds, and there were smiles and rainbows, and an end to this phase, this phase of the project really seems to be coming to an end, and the next phase on the verge of beginning. So I thank you all, and again, particularly for Councilmember Volin, Rollo, and Granger, who were there today during several hours of really important and substantive discussion, but all of you for working so hard on this. We look forward to a productive partnership. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McKim. It was a warm meeting on a chilly day. Further comment, please.
Hi, Greg Alexander here. A couple procedural issues. The mayor likes to push through projects unilaterally without consulting with other groups, and for once, in county government, he meant something that pushed back, and I hope you all are taking notes. But this amendment's purpose is to, as I understand it, to have the, to make sure the county gets representation, but you guys are supposed to get representation also. So I hope you guys have some vision for how this actually should play out, and you're not merely babysitting an interaction between the mayor and the county. Another procedural note is that when, in April of 2015, even before he'd won the primary, the mayor, then, just a candidate, said that Mayor Cruzan should not, could not possibly sign any contracts with any designers, any architects, or any, I don't know what you call a design firm for that, for the trades park. He said that the new mayor should make that decision, that he should not even, that the old mayor should not even pick which contractor to work with. He said, in order to delay for, at that point, you know, 10 months, that the process should be dragged out in all the boards and commissions. That was our mayor who made that argument, and now, of course, he's saying the exact opposite. Kind of frustrating, is there a truth there, or is it just posturing all around? I don't, I don't know. But personally, I'd rather see the new council consider this. And then, this isn't procedural, this is substantive, that the new, the reason you're being asked to allocate this money after having already allocated money for the design of the convention center, is that it's gotten so much larger. And one of the ways it's gotten larger is it's no longer simply limited to the, what is it called, the bar, the bar and restaurant tax. Now it's also expecting to use TIF funds for a parking garage. And that's very frustrating, because we have a severe sidewalk shortage in the city, we have, we have housing projects, we have a lot of things we could spend TIF money on, but instead, it looks like we're going to spend it on another parking garage. So we're looking at, you know, between, what, 40 and 50 million of TIF money in the last two years spent on parking garages, and that's actually a result of a decision that's going to be made tonight. We're going to get closer and closer to that slippery path of wasting more money on parking garages. If you guys let the mayor go forward with a, with a design that's simply too large, that's too wasteful of taxpayer dollars. If you look in the community, you know, nobody bothers to show up to oppose the convention center, but nobody's particularly excited about it. It's not a political winner. It's, it's, it's kind of a carve-out for restaurant keepers, and that makes sense to me. But now that the project has grown to include TIF money, it has to have a larger public good, and we, you know, in six months or in a year or two, we will be arguing about TIF money for another garage. TIF money for another garage downtown, and that's ridiculous. And one other substantive issue, you got them by the balls, man. You have to make sure that they leave the sidewalks open while they build this darn thing. The sidewalks downtown cannot be closed for five years while we develop three different properties for the convention center, and if you don't make that a concrete requirement, they will be. You guys can do something about this. Don't just shrug and say, this is just something that happens. You can get that in writing. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Any further comments on the Amendment One for Appropriation Ordinance 1909? Seeing none, we're back to council for final comment or recommendation on the amendment. Councilmember Volan?
Yes, I'm still irritated by President Spoonmore for stealing my thunder. This is the so-called moving-forward amendment. And I, I'm glad to note that, that we have finally defined what moving forward looks like, and it looks like this, and it looks like the interlocal agreement that I am looking forward to seeing a second draft of from county legal. I do want to address Mr. Alexander's comments, because I think they're relevant and important. I think that he has been, in the past few years, very eloquent on issues regarding sidewalks, and he's made at least this member pay attention to those issues that I used to take for granted, and I appreciate them very much. I do think that he is, does not know enough about the, the very detailed debate that has been going on between city and county just in the past few days and weeks. The, he had a procedural complaint that I've already not written down properly, the, and I can't remember it now, so I'm going to go to the substantive complaint that he made. I do not support TIF funds paying for the garage, which right now, the consultants estimate will only cover about a quarter of its cost, and at least according to traditional methods of managing convention center garages. I know that consultants like Pundin and others who we've consulted believe that a garage is essential to the success of a convention center. I am not persuaded by that. And so again, the reason I'm voting for funds to design the garage is only because it would be a crime if the garage could be designed in an integrated way with the rest of the convention center, if we approved it and it was not integrated. But I believe that the city must have authority to manage the garage, otherwise it might set off the entirety of the rest of the city's downtown parking system if the garage was priced appropriately and it caused some people to try to use the neighboring Forest Street garage or parking meters on the street if our pricing was not commensurate with theirs. And so it's important that downtown parking be managed as part of a whole single system. Perhaps an interlocal agreement may need to be struck in that case. But I don't think that it's correct, I just, I can't remember now the point I wanted to make. I will finally say that I agree that this, that a public sidewalk should stay open during the construction of the convention center. It does not make sense to do it otherwise to me, and on that point, I agree with Mr. Alexander. With that, I'm just going to say I ask everyone to support the amendment. It is a result of a great deal of deliberation and collaboration between city and county officials, and it will allow us to take the next step. Thank you.
Further comment? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, I'd like to thank my colleagues, and especially Councilmember Volan, for his hard work on this amendment and for attending all the meetings of the Food and Beverage Advisory Commission. It is difficult, having a full-time job and being a councilmember, that I'm unable to attend those meetings, so I very much appreciate the colleagues who did attend. The, changing the, the word "will" to "may" as far as the construction of the parking garage is very important to me, so I'm, I appreciate that Councilmember Volan made that change, or I don't know if we still need to adopt it, but I agree that we shouldn't spend more TIF money on a parking garage. We need to try to make it pay for itself as much as possible. We also should look at a comprehensive view of transportation to and from our convention center and look at, you know, increasing shuttles from the airport, and a pet project of Councilmember Volan's to have a downtown circulator shuttle so that we can make use of the parking garages that we already have. So those are all things that should be examined. I also agree with Councilmember Volan that those should be examined as part of the architectural planning for which we are appropriating the money. So I, in, in that respect, I don't hesitate to support this amendment. Leaving sidewalks open during construction, I think, is something we need to do a whole lot better on, and it's been very bad downtown the last few years, and I think this is something we need to discuss with Public Works before construction begins. This is a city-owned project. There's no excuse for shutting down public rights away for pedestrians, and we need to do better with private projects as well. So thank you, Mr. Alexander, for continually yapping at our heels. I think that we, I agree, we need to improve on that. So I'll be supporting the amendment. Thank you.
Further comment on the amendment? I'll just say thank you, Councilmember Volan, and thank you to my council, county colleagues and administration. This is a wonderful development. So with that, is there a recommendation?
Call a question.
Questions been called and seconded on Amendment One for Ordinance 1909. Will Deputy Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Granger?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Volan?
Yes, already.
Sims?
Yes.
Sterbaum?
Sandberg?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Chopra?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. Amendment One is adopted, eight-zero. Moving forward, I'll introduce, yeah, I'd like to make a move Amendment Two.
Second.
Thank you. This is Amendment Two, which amends appropriation ordinance 1909 by inserting a final whereas clause, which reads as follows, whereas the council urges that the facility be a net-zero energy or lead platinum facility, and it also amends by adding an "and" after the semicolon at the end of the previous whereas clause. We will go to council questions. Councilmember Volan?
Yes, I want to suggest that maybe you make it a net-zero energy and/or lead platinum facility. Is there a difference between the two? I think there is. Net-zero means that all the energy is created by the facility, if not on the facility's site. Lead platinum is about, like, it's more like defense. It's, I mean, net-zero is a combination of offense and defense. It's making it as efficient as possible while also generating energy on the site. Lead platinum is about just saving energy. What say you?
Yes, absolutely. I think we can make that correction.
Well, if you would suggest it.
I would, yes.
If the, if the maker is doing it like I just did with "will" to "may," he can do "or" to "and slash or."
And/or.
You do it.
Yes.
There we go. Nice and clean.
Further questions? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, Councilmember Rallo, I know you and I spoke about this earlier, but for the benefit of the public, could you please explain why we are not requiring that the facility be net-zero and/or lead platinum?
Yes, I think as we discussed today at our county-city meeting, that these decisions about design and so forth should be made by the governing entity, the CIB, if that is what it will be, and so it should come at that point in that determination. And clearly, at this point, we don't, we have insufficient information in terms of the cost. We have some parameters, but that's yet to be determined. It's going to, it's going to require some, well, you know, a lot of evaluation of it, but it, it makes our intent clear, and I think it's shared by the county, as I determined this morning, as we determined.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Volan?
Mr. President, I wonder if you would like to know during public comment, the general consensus of those elected officials of the county who are here tonight as to what they think of, maybe not so much the amendment, but the idea behind it, and whether they would like to see the building be either net-zero and/or lead platinum themselves. Would you like to hear their answers to that question?
I, I would, if they cared, if they cared to speak.
Thank you.
I saw a lot of nodding heads, so I think that...
Thank you. We can wait till public comment. I just wanted to.
Yes.
I just wanted to...
I think we can, if there aren't any further questions, we can go. Are there any council questions? Councilmember Chopra, did you have a question?
Oh, no.
Okay. Then we'll go to public on Amendment Two, if anyone cared to speak.
Hi, Greg Alexander here again. Lead is a famous greenwashing technique. It is not all bad. It's got a lot of good things going for it, but it is possibly lead-certified while being sprawl, it's possibly lead-certified while encouraging more automobile use, and as long as we have a parking garage, we're not going to come close to actual net-zero. So if you actually care about the emissions generated by this facility, parking has to be foremost on your mind because transportation is an incredible use, especially for business travel. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Jeff McKim, I certainly do support this, this amendment. I do, I think that the idea of either a net-zero carbon building or, and/or probably and lead-certified building is, is a worthy goal. I think this, it should be, that concept should kind of be embedded in a broader concept of a, kind of, I'd call it agenda for a 21st century convention center, and that includes, of course, the, the carbon emissions and energy usage and production of the building, but also living wage for employees, strong and tight integration with transit, both from the, from Indianapolis, but also locally, sustainable catering, which would include, you know, low food waste, waste food donation, local sourcing of food, also right-sized parking, which I know is a concern of many of you, including a sophisticated transportation demand management system, and reduction of subsidy of parking facilities, and then a strong pedestrian integration, integrated into a walkable cityscape. So I don't, I don't necessarily think that that needs to be in the appropriation ordinance now, but I think particularly as we move forward with the CIB and the city makes its appointee, appointments to the Board, and the county makes its appointments to the Board, if that is indeed the, the vehicle, that this broader agenda of a, of a more, more progressive convention center be, be considered. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Hello, Kate Wiltz, County Council, District Two. This is my first time addressing the city council. It's kind of exciting. I just came from the county's environmental commission meeting, and it's a, it's a small but mighty force. Commissioner Jones serves on that as well, and we were discussing this exact idea. Wanted to express to you that in addition to my full support on everything that my colleague, Councilmember McKim, just said, the environmental commission specifically would be very interested in assisting, advising in any way, and anything that, that that body could do to facilitate the consideration of a net-zero or lead-certified facility and other sustainable approaches to making this convention center work. We're happy to work with our city colleagues and our, of course, with our county as well. Thanks for the opportunity. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Wiltz.
Hi, I'm Penny Githens, County Commissioner. I just echo everything that's been said by both Councilor Wiltz and Councilor McKim. We are really thrilled that this is moving forward, and I fully support your Second Amendment.
Thank you, Commissioner Githens.
Good evening, Commissioner Jones, Lee Jones. I just think this is a really exciting time to actually be building a whole new building in our community, and we can make it a demonstration and a statement about what we really care about in this community. I'm very, very pleased that this was brought up, and I hope that we'll keep it in mind throughout all the negotiations and that it can come to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones.
Peter Iverson, Monroe County Council. You know, I was recently elected, and my first, the first district in the county encompasses roughly the eastern third of the county. The district that I represent encompasses all three of the major lakes of this county, as well as the tributaries that go into those bodies of water. The environment is very, very important to the constituency that elected me, and I hear from the constituents that elected me that it is part of my duty to protect our very near and dear environment. This building that we're building together is going to be here for generations, we hope, and I think that it is absolutely necessary to take into consideration what Councilman, Councilmember Piedmont Smith said, that this should not be something that we simply may consider, but something that we, we definitely need to be doing. This is something that will be demanded of us, not only by the current generations, but by those to follow. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Councilmember Iverson?
Hello, Commissioner Julie Thomas again. I am absolutely in full support of doing anything you can to make this as environmentally sustainable as possible, because buildings like this typically are not. I will tell you something I shared this morning. Nashville, Tennessee's convention center has cisterns, and they gather water from the green roof, which I didn't see it, but it says it replicates the rolling hills of Tennessee. I have no idea, because I didn't go look. I took their word for it, but 316,000 gallons is what they hold. They use it for flushing toilets and for watering indoor plants. Why do I know this? Because they put big signs all over the convention center, and I walked by it a bunch of times. I didn't write it down, I just saw it a lot, and it made me feel good about being at a convention center, which I typically don't. So I think it does say a lot about the community, and I think you have our full support, and hopefully that will assist you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas.
Good evening, Cheryl Munson, Monroe County Council. I'm the last to wrap up. The entire county delegation approaching you tonight, and I think this might be a record for so many county-elected officials appearing here to talk with you. I think, I think this discussion about sustainability and the future of our convention center is very important to discuss, and we will be talking about this while we guide what is going on with our aspirations, and our aspirations will, will be realized by a governing body, and we will, we will be entrusting them to speak for us. So the public will be, be speaking to us as they have been, the hoteliers and the restaurateurs and all the other businesses who have been frustrated but are now going to be happy and encouraged moving forward, and we will be working together to talk about what our aspirations are for this new building that we're doing together. Thank you to each of you for your part in making this happen.
Thank you, Councilmember Munson. If there's no other public, then we will come back to council for final comments on Amendment Two. Councilmember Volan?
Yeah, I want to point out, first of all, that even parking garages these days are being built as net-zero buildings. That is, of course, ironic, because as Mr. Alexander correctly points out... correctly points out, the cars traveling to and from them generate a whole lot of carbon emissions. However, business travel is not going to end, and here's one reason why, no. It's like saying that we, saying that we should say, not that Mr. Alexander said that, but saying that we should meet online because it saves carbon is like saying we should eliminate college campuses because people can learn online. And I can say categorically that nothing beats meeting somebody in person, and that there is going to be conventions for decades to come, if not centuries to come. People need to get together. What we can do is try to be an example of how to minimize the carbon footprint of such a building. There is no longer an excuse for any building to not at least be thinking about its energy requirements, and not just being LEED, but being a generator of its own energy. So it's entirely appropriate that we be thinking about net zero and LEED platinum. But the, the dilemma came to us when it was, it was suggested by more than one person that we should be thinking about how energy efficient the building should be, and we were talking behind the scenes about making it a part of the actual ordinance language, not simply a whereas clause. But in principle, we should not be binding our would-be new partners. I am delighted to hear what I suspected, which is that at least those, all the county representatives who are here share our concern for energy efficiency and for sensitivity to the urban environment. But, so we should, certainly should not be binding our colleagues to something when we just finished promising in the other amendment that we would do everything equally. But this begs the question of any new governance entity that would oversee this new enterprise. Once we create it, these kinds of requirements that us elected officials would like to see are at least technically out of the hands of both city and county. They belong to those who are on the CIB. And in the same way that the CVC is made up of people in the industry, so the focus of a typical CIB will only be conventions. At least in the past, that's, that's what we would, should have expected. We have, collectively, we have to carve into the new entity our values from the beginning. So that inter-local agreement is going to be very important. The document that creates a CIB will need to be worded, again, with our joint values, you know, in it, because once this thing is created, it's going to possess all the land, all the taxes, all the responsibility for this new entity. I can't really emphasize enough how important it is that city and county express those values explicitly before we all sign the dotted line. I'm confident that we are going to do that, but I don't think we can just assume that the CIB will automatically carry the values of, of people, officials who are elected to serve everyone in their jurisdictions and not simply a particular interest. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yeah, I'm thrilled to hear all three county commissioners and a majority of the county council agree that we really need to look at a highly, highly energy-efficient, if not energy-producing, building. Just a few other examples. Commissioner Thomas mentioned the convention center in Louisville. There are lots of, was it Louisville?
Nashville.
Nashville, sorry, other part of Kentucky. There are lots of examples of convention centers, most of them in bigger cities, that are doing amazing things. The Javits Center in New York has a 6.75 acre green roof that has 27 bird species, and they create 125 pounds of honey from a rooftop beehive. So it's amazing how much of, you know, that a carbon sink in a green space is provided right in the middle of, of New York. McCormick Place in Chicago also has a green roof. They yield 8,000 pounds of produce annually, which is, then becomes the focal point for their, their chef, their, their meals that they serve at the center. Orange, Orange County in Orlando, their convention center is LEED gold, and they also have, all right, I don't have a specific example of what they have, but there, there are many examples throughout the country. And the one in Louisville, since it wasn't mentioned, is also installing practices in their expansion using recycled content and low emission materials to reduce pollutants inside the building. And they have achieved a 24% reduction in utility costs and a 32% reduction in water use. So there are a lot of great ideas out there. They're not necessarily terribly expensive either. Just to quote Architect Magazine online, "The economics of net zero is changing quickly." Amanda Sturgeon, FAIA, CEO of International Living Future Institute, which administered a certification process for net zero buildings, said, "The investment to go to net zero is now about half of what it was three or four years ago. It can be, can pay back quickly, generally in less than five years, and in some places even less than that." So it is, it makes economic sense, as well as environmental sense, to go in this direction. So I'm very pleased with this amendment and with the, the kind of support we've heard from our colleagues in the county. And so we will keep this in mind as we move forward with the project.
Further comments from council? And I'll just say, it's really wonderful that our county colleagues, and I always, I knew this anyway, share our commitment to our climate challenge, and that they see this project presenting an opportunity for, for us to move forward on our climate obligation. Together, I wanted to say that Deputy Mayor Ronison shared a similar sentiment about supporting the aspirational goal of net zero or very high efficiency, high-performance building. Councilmember Piedmont Smith, I think, I was thinking the same thing, that this is an investment that pays dividends over time. It may be a higher upfront cost, but over time, we would get the payback, and of course, we would reduce greenhouse gases. And I just finally wanted to say that a lot of this was inspired by an editorial by Dave Askins from B-Square Beacon, who wrote an excellent editorial, and I recommend it highly, in the wake of the climate activists that came and spoke to us the, the prior week. So, so thank you. So with that, is there...
Call questions. Second.
Okay, the question's been called second and on Amendment Two. Will Deputy Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Rollo?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Sterbaum?
Sandberg?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Chopra?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Granger?
Yes.
Thank you. Amendment Two is adopted eight to zero. Back to the ordinance as amended. I think we were on questions. Are there any further questions from council on the ordinance as amended? Seeing none, we'll go to the public. Public would like to speak on the ordinance as amended. Ordinance 1909. Thank you.
Hi, Greg Alexander. Sorry to beat the horse, but it's still standing in the sidewalk. I've been doing this for 20 years. I've been going to sidewalk construction zones, and I was in college and I didn't know any better. Honestly, I might still do this, but don't tell anybody. I, if I, if it's real obvious that simply moving a couple cones or a couple barriers will reopen the sidewalk, I reopen the sidewalk. I've been doing that for 20 years. And so for seven years, I've been trying to get city government to give me a, a hand with this. I've spoken to engineers in planning and transportation. I've spoken to technicians in planning and transportation. I've spoken to Public Works. I've spoken to you guys. I've spoken to plan commission. I haven't achieved diddly squat. I'm always too early to the project or too late to the project. It's never the right time to tell the contractor that you can't close the sidewalk. You, you know, if, this is a huge design contract. They're going to specify how to build the building. They're not just going to tell you what size it should be, what shape it should be. They're going to tell you, you know, this is, they're going to give you a schedule. They're going to give you, you know, how much space around the building you're going to need to do that. They're going to tell you if you're going to use scaffolding or if you're going to use skylifts. Like, this is going to be a detailed engineering proposal that's going to come out of this architect firm. This is not too early. Is this too late? Should I have told you guys this, like, two months ago, so you could have an amendment ready? I don't know. But I do know, just, what, seven months ago, you guys appropriated $18 million for another parking garage, and already that appropriation decision you made right here has closed a sidewalk for three months now. Somebody died right there. The sidewalk is closed, right where there was a fatality, and you're telling me it's not the right time to try to guarantee that the sidewalk stays open? This is, this is really, really elementary stuff. I'd love to be talking about designing roads for bikes, or there's a million more interesting things that we could do if we wanted to excel at this urban design challenge of transitioning away from using a car to go to the grocery store. But we're at this very basic level where I'm trying to get for one project to not close the sidewalk when that project is... Why are we going to close the sidewalk for five years? That's what it is. Why are we going to close the sidewalk for five years? Just put another amendment. I don't think it's too late for you to move another amendment. Just somebody move another amendment. Put it as a whereas, just say, whereas the council believes sidewalks should stay open during, during construction. Do anything. Do something. My God, guys, we need to change this. I have done everything I can. You guys need to step up. We need to have the sidewalks stay open on this project. Don't appropriate money that's going to close a gosh darn sidewalk. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Other comments on the amendment, or, sorry, on the ordinance as amended? Okay, seeing none, we're back to council. Final comment. Councilmember Ruff.
Well, first of all, I'll say I'm very sympathetic to Mr. Alexander's position. I, and I can't imagine that it can, a price tag of what we're looking at here. I mean, just the design fees, we're, we're looking at 6 million, or we're allocating now, potentially, to create a construction site where the sidewalks can't stay open. I mean, we've all walked in big cities where they're doing construction, and you're walking under those things, but at least the sidewalks are open. But, you know, you're walking under a protected roofed tunnel based on the sidewalk. And, I mean, I, I think he makes a really strong argument, and not just for this, but for future projects, because I, over the years, I have had a lot of citizens, other than Mr. Alexander, complain about the closing of sidewalks to basically, in this case, it's a, it's a public, and the hotels may be private too, but a public-private partnership, but a lot of totally private projects closing sidewalks. But then, back to overall, on the ordinance or on the app board, you know, some people may have noticed, I've been relatively quiet throughout this whole, long process. And that's because I'm not quite as enthusiastic about the expansion of the convention center, about the, the benefits, the potential assumed benefits from it and the need for it. I'm not quite as excited as everybody. However, you know, a few years ago, we were very close to having Bloomington Hospital located out in the Greenfield, Greenfields between Bloomington and Ellisville. Very close. As a matter of fact, it was assumed that that's what was going to happen. There was an 11th hour change that put it where that nobody, I don't think anybody's anticipated that it would end up where it would be in a much better, much better place than out between Bloomington and Ellisville. Out there, off bus lines, not integrated into our urbanized area, less accessible to low-income and handicapped people, and, you know, disabled people, less suitable and less consistent with our growth policies plan, less sustainable, that location, clearly, undebatably. And, you know, my, the questions I've always had about the assumed needs and benefits of an expanded convention center in Bloomington, Indiana, as an economic development tool, have been linked to I-69 ever since. My concerns, my questions, I've kind of always had, they changed when they became, in my mind, totally linked to I-69. Because I believe it's reasonably likely that a private interest would build a project of this type, trying to attract business out in that area, which we used to call Criderville. I bet they could get the land pretty cheap to get an anchor tenant. I'm sure the owners of the property would love to have an anchor tenant, something like that, to, to start a massive suburban project out there. It would have all the trappings of unsustainable sprawl, not being integrated with our downtown, diverting economic activity away from our downtown, in our urbanized core, private ownership, completely out of the control of public input and decision-making and involvement. I think that's a realistic scenario. And so while I'm not quite as enthusiastic that this, this project may be, if we had a more thorough contemporary analysis compared to when it was conceived, that it, whether it's a growth for the sake of growth, whether the, whether the net effect, in terms of the income levels of the, of the associated jobs generated with it, in terms of new construction and new restaurants opening as opposed to really enabling our existing ones to thrive more, I think there's a lot of questions about, you know, to the extent that this will, is sort of the kind of thing, well, make Bloomington bigger, like Austin, Texas got bigger and bigger and bigger and bigger, quantitatively bigger, but how much qualitatively bigger? I mean, I, I don't know. I, but I do have some concerns and questions. But it's absolutely superior in every way, shape, and form to an alternative location that would harm the economic viability and the vitality of our, of our community in our, in our urbanized area and be much less sustainable. So, once again, though I do have, I've always had some questions and misgivings, I'm, I'm going to support it for the reason I supported the original resolution we made supporting the, the food and beverage tax, which was the threat of an alternative on, on I-69. So, thank you.
Thank you. Further council comment? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes. I have also never been a cheerleader for an expanded convention center. I abstained when the city council took up resolution in favor of the food and beverage tax. At that time, it was mainly because I didn't feel like it was my place to tell the county what to do. Since then, I've really been awakened more to the urgency of climate change and the need to change the way we think about economic development and change the way we live, basically, to try to drastically cut greenhouse gas emissions. And although I agree with Councilmember Volin that there is no better way to exchange ideas than face-to-face, I think the reality is that we need to travel less and take advantage of technology to, to do things that otherwise would have been done in conventions. So I just think in 2019, 2020, this is, this massive investment in a convention center expansion is not the best way to spend public funds. I think these funds would be much better spent on improving our sidewalks, improving our transit, and doing other things to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, not encourage people to increase greenhouse gas emissions, which they will do, because most people come here by car. However, I, I do believe the ship has sailed. I mean, the, the city made the commitment to use the food and beverage tax funds towards the convention center expansion. It's important to follow through on one's commitments, especially public commitments on taxpayer money and commitments to our colleagues in the county. So I don't pretend that I can stop this train now, so I'm not going to stop it by voting against this, this request to appropriate funds. I'm very grateful, once again, to my colleagues who have worked diligently on both the county and the city sides to reach an agreement to move forward. Doesn't help anybody to just, you know, fight each other rather than moving forward in the interests of spending taxpayer dollars in the way that we've committed to spend them. And I, I hope that this project can be... And I hope that this project can be a net-zero energy building so that at least when people do travel here, they won't be using fossil fuels while they have their conventions. So with that, I will support this appropriation ordinance. Thank you.
Further comment? Go ahead, Councilmember Volin.
The county wanted us to show we were serious a few months back by making sure a garage was included in the convention center, and they've expressed concern recently about the impact, for example, of the city plan commission on the design. But, you know, like, these are some trust issues we have to work through in the inter-local agreement, but it is ultimately up to the city collectively to address the transportation environment in which the new convention center would open. So we need to talk about other ways to move people around. We need to talk about a circulator shuttle to go around downtown. We should be talking about a circulator shuttle to go to every hotel in the area to discourage people from renting cars because they feel they have to get from their far-off hotel to the convention center. And we need to be talking about subsidizing shuttles from the airport to discourage people from renting cars because they feel they can get around. A $15 million garage at 3% interest over 20 years, and I know that's not necessarily how bonds work, but it's a rough figure for the sake of argument, is just a hair under $20 million. We can fund a 10-minute, every 10-minute shuttle throughout the downtown for maybe three-quarters of a million dollars a year. In other words, for that kind of money, we can fund that shuttle for more than 30 years. You know, like, instead of spending money on the garage, you could spend it on all the subsidies we would need to discourage parking and then rely on, say, surface lots, remote parking, again, serviced by a shuttle. And I'm confident that we can actually pay for some of that through parking fees in what's left. So it's ironic that my colleague, Councilmember Piedmont Smith, is talking about the ship sailing and the train that can't be stopped because trains and boats are making a comeback. Greta Thunberg famously came to America on a boat. Of course we can do it. There's no need to travel less. There is a need to travel more efficiently. And if that means reducing your flight diet, well, so be it. That's, you have to think about carbon emissions as well, but the ships still sail, rails can be reintroduced, we can settle for bus rapid transit, shuttles from the airport. There are lots of things we can do rather than spend this much capital on a garage. So, again, I'm not ruling it out, but I hope everyone sees how serious I am, at least, that we, you know, bake into the CIB the notion of our carbon future. It's irresponsible for us at this point, knowing that it's just getting worse, that everyone now accepts that climate change is affecting us, not just real, but affecting us personally, that we build this building heedless of what's coming and pretending that we can do what we used to do. Thank you.
Further comment? I'll make mine very brief. I just want to thank, again, our county colleagues for coming this evening and in past meetings, and I want to thank the administration for their work as well and their support of the amendments. I wanted to say that, yeah, I'm conflicted, and I wanted to reiterate what both Councilmember Piedmont Smith and Councilmember Ruff said. This facility, something like it, I feel is inevitable, and I don't want it to be on I-69 with all the attendant sprawl, hotels, bars, restaurants, et cetera. I want it downtown. I want it to be a public facility, as Commissioner Thomas said this morning, that we ought to remind ourselves that this is not just the convention center, but a civic center for the public, and that's our intention, and we should follow through with that. So with that, is there a recommendation?
Call the question.
Second.
Question's been called, second on appropriation ordinance 1909 as amended. Will the deputy clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Volin?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Sterbaum?
Sandberg?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Chopra?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Granger?
Yes.
Rollo?
Yes, thank you. Appropriation ordinance 1909 as amended is adopted 8-0. Thank you all for attending. We'll go now to council schedule. Mr. Sherman, do we have any considerations for our schedule?
Yes, I think it's time.
You'll have to move the microphone closer.
Yes, thank you.
Are you closer to the microphone?
Based on your actions last night, we have, we'll wrap up the UDO on Wednesday at 6:00 PM. We'll also have a regular session, last meeting of the year for the council, fingers crossed. Also, do know that we're actually getting ready for next year, so on Monday, the 16th, at noon, there's a council work session for some items that are coming forward in the first cycle in January. So that's it for the council schedule. Thank you.
Thank you for that reminder. Councilmember Volin, do you have a question?
Mr. President, shouldn't we be thinking about canceling certain UDO meetings, like we had one scheduled for tomorrow? Did we cancel it yesterday?
Yes, we did.
Did we also cancel next Tuesdays?
Yes.
So we're going to, so the meeting will continue?
On Wednesday.
On Wednesday, so it's still in recess?
Yes.
Very good, thank you.
Yes. Okay, any other questions? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Mr. Sherman, did you say we have a work session on Monday, the 16th?
Yes.
What is on the agenda, and should we gauge whether people are going to show up?
That would be a good idea. This is our last chance to do that. We have the planned unit development called Curry Urban Properties. It's the Pete Ellis Drive in Longview, so that's ready to come forward. The deadline for that, or the 90 days expire in mid-February, so we have at least a month of the council to, you know, to hear it. So that would give two cycles before it comes back to the regular session. The other is an inducement resolution for an affordable housing project. I think it has to do with the Housing Authority. Do you recall that they've reorganized with your help? And I think we're at a point where you'll be able to consider an inducement resolution. Those are the two items.
Well, perhaps we should have a show of hands of who might, looking into the new year, attend for the 16th, I believe? Is that correct? A work session on 16th?
Those are two items who will appear on the 18th, or is that in the afterwards?
Yeah, no, those are work session topics for the 16th. Correct, Mr. Sherman?
That's correct. The next work session is, I think it's January 3rd, and it's possible that you could use that occasion to hear these items along with one other one if you're, you're sort of, you're meeting doubt for the rest of the year, and some of you won't be coming back, so that's a possibility. So if you want to think along those lines, let us know.
Mr. Chair, I would just like to move now to move this to January 3rd. I don't see any reason to have it on the 16th.
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor of moving those items to the 3rd from the 16th? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Would you like a show of hands of who might attend? Or is this?
It sounded...
Is it premature?
Well, people will show up.
Sounded like it passed, but it's your determination whether it passed or not.
Mr. President, I'm moving to cancel the work session for Monday, the 16th?
Second.
All in favor of canceling the work session on the 16th? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So that satisfies our council schedule. Is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, and we will reconvene in a moment chaired by Councilmember Chopra for Committee of the Whole.
We'll call this Committee of the Whole to order. It is 6:30, no, it's not 6:30, it is 8:36 PM on Wednesday, the 11th of December, 2019. We have one item on the agenda, which is ordinance 1928 to amend Title II of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Administration and Personnel regarding amending Chapter 2.28 Bloomington Living Wage Ordinance to remove exclusion for city seasonal employees. The sponsors are councilmembers Granger and Piedmont Smith, and I will turn it over to one of the two of them to present the amendment.
Thank you. I think you all remember that we've been working on this for many, many years. This is the final phase of ensuring that all city staff are paid the living wage, oh, there's no city staff here, including part-time and seasonal employees. We feel pretty strongly that if we are demanding that people with whom we contract pay a living wage, then we should be doing that ourselves. And I'm, we're here to answer questions.
Questions to my left, to my right. Seeing known, I will go to comment from the public and back to council for comment. We'll start on my right with, would you like to go last, sponsee?
I don't care.
Sponsor? Okay, then go ahead, Councilmember Granger.
Thank you. I just want to acknowledge my colleague, Mr. Ruff, for first putting this in place 52 years ago, or whenever it was. I mean, I, we have a reason to be proud to be living in Bloomington, and I just want to thank Andy for getting us on the right track. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rollo?
Yes, I remember that day, 52 years ago. I want to credit Councilmember Ruff. He took a lot of heat back then, I remember. I was cosponsoring, and I took heat, but he took a lot, and it was going to be a job killer, and it was going to be the end of the world, and it was actually a very good thing for the community and for everyone. And I want to thank my colleagues, Councilmember Granger and Piedmont Smith, because they have been advocating this for a long, long time, and they achieved it, and I really, I appreciate your persistence. Thank you.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, I too want to acknowledge Councilmember Ruff, and I remember that's, that's when I crossed over from the Green Party to the Democratic Party to campaign for Andy Ruff because he was taking a lot of flak for something that was actually the noble and right thing to do. And so we were just kind of mopping up after his very strong work, and of course, the members of the council that supported it as well. I don't know if anybody else was on the council that, 2003, when the Living Wage Ordinance passed.
52 years ago?
Maybe. Councilmember Sterbaum. Anyway, I want to just acknowledge that the living wage for 2020 is only $13.21 an hour. You'd be hard-pressed to try to live off of that, especially if you have any dependents. So I think we do need to perhaps take a look at our Living Wage Ordinance and see if it might be due for an adjustment. When it was passed in 2003, it was, 2006? Wait, was it 2003? 52 years ago, anyway.
It was 2005.
2005, thank you. When it was passed, it was tied with, I believe, the, is it the Consumer Price Index?
It was indexed.
It was indexed to the Consumer Price Index, and so it has gone up since then, but I think that we haven't kept up with the cost of living, especially with housing costs in the city, which we all know are very high. So that's something to look at in the coming year or two, whether we need to recalibrate. But in the meantime, I, you know, I'm happy to at least include the last portion of city employees, the seasonal employees. Thank you.
Councilmember Volin?
It was 2005, because I remember when I was running in 2003, I was being asked about it too, and there was no language yet, and it took Councilmember Ruff a while to get the language right. So that's how long it took, that's how long it takes to make good legislation. I want to thank him. I think he's a damn fool for running for another office after he leaves this one, but good luck to him there. I also want to thank Councilwoman Chopra for running an expeditious meeting. Thank you.
Councilmember Sims?
Thank you. I just want to thank Councilmembers Granger and Piedmont Smith for bringing this, and Councilmember Ruff for planting the seed. Actually, I think it was more like 62 years ago. I think I was only a year old when he started. That's okay, we didn't get that. My comments tonight is, I think this is important, but I also, Consumer Price Index is what it's linked to, and that was a little bit before my time, so I'd have to look more into it. But I think it's important that that is tied to some sort of a living increase, like COLA, like the Cost of Living allowance. And we do that with some of our other employees, and last year was 2.8%. This year, I think it's 1.6 or 1.8%. But that's, it's intense, so I think moving forward, that's something we might consider, or maybe we already have, and I just don't know about it. But one of the most important things, I think, this is from the city standpoint, is that we are setting the standard or strongly urging our businesses and other entities out in the community to possibly adopt such a living wage. And I know there's pressures, there's pressures of profit on many businesses and that sort of thing, but I think it's important that we are holding that torch and leading the way, whether or not we can affect some of the businesses that, you know, actually pay pretty low wages, and if they were to raise it as high as we would like, then there could be some dire consequences, potentially. But I think it's important that we lead the way, so that's why I'm happy to support this. Thank you.
Councilmember Sandberg?
Thank you. While we're all waxing nostalgic about this time when Mr. Ruff's valiant efforts finally produced the Living Wage Ordinance, I recall the political climate at that time. This is when there actually were people from the opposite side of the aisle running for office, and I remember around Halloween time, right before an election, all this campaign literature, "Night of the Living Wage," and like, people, you know, dead bodies on cadavers with a toe tag, you know, all this doom and gloom. I just, that just stands out in my mind. This was two years before I joined the council, but of course, I was paying close attention to the political climate. All that said, back in 2005, and we have seen the benefits of the cities taking a lead in this, in this important issue, and we need to continue to do so, wages are a big part of affordability, as we are struggling mightily with our financial fiscal options, which are quite limited in subsidizing and incentivizing affordable housing and affordable everything. You know, the Affordable Living Committee spent a great deal of time looking at all this. It is wages that is the last piece that needs to fall in line with the times. People can't afford housing, they can't afford a lot of things because the wages are just not adequate to the basic necessities of living. And so as we are mindful of that, to the extent that we do have a leadership role here in the community, we cannot dictate to the private sector what they do, but we can certainly lead by example here in the city in treating our employees that work is valuable, their time is valuable, and we need to pay them adequate wages. And so thanks to the colleagues for bringing this forward. I completely and wholeheartedly support it, and I support Andy Ruff in spite of all the grief that he took during the Night of the Living Wage. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a recommendation? Do you pass?
Recommend, do pass. Second. So on your right.
I'm sorry?
You can sit on your right or your left.
I'm going to start on my left with Councilmember Sandberg.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
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 That's a recommend, do pass, 8-0-0. Meeting?
Move adjournment?
Second.
Adjourn.
Second.
Adjourn.
[applause][1733.91]